Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tom Water Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August eighth, 2023, at 7:00 PM, and the meeting is called to order. Go ahead and start with roll call. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Schumacher is excused. Vice Chair Sullivan, we're expecting her online. She's just not here quite yet. We'll come back. Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Hello?
Here.
Here.
And we are expecting Commissioner Von Holt. She's not here quite yet either. And me, Commissioner Ross. Okay, I think that does give us a quorum, though, so we'll move ahead. Any changes to our agenda tonight? Anybody else? Let's go to the meeting minutes from some past meetings. Some of them are far enough away that I admit I had sort of dim recollection, so it was good to see those notes. Any comments on any of those sets of minutes from people? All three sets. Patrick? Moving to approve all three sets together.
Tobias will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from all three sets, February 28th, May 23rd, June 27th of 2023. Last call for any comments. Right. All in favor of approving the three sets? Please say aye.
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 Be opposed. Motion passes. They're approved. Commissioners' reports. Anybody have anything you want to mention? Up to? Six. Okay. Managers' report.
So to report, Erica, do you want to mention the survey for the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Yep. Right now, currently, we are in an open house survey period for the Hazard Mitigation Plan that I presented last time we had met. I did send a follow-up email to the group with a link if you guys want to vote on the initiatives that the City of Tom Water is proposing for their annex. I believe it is open until the 25th of this month. And then the open house closes, but there still will be a public comment until September 25th. Or October.
August is October.
I will just say the open house survey ends the 25th of this month.
Oh, okay. That's still a pretty good long time, so. All right. Let's go to, is there anybody from the public who would like to address the planning commission? I see Mr. Tony from Jolt like to address the planning commission?
Hello, this is Jerome from the Jolt. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Anybody else? Brad, did you hear from anybody in the meanwhile by?
No, no correspondence or email or anything.
Move to item number eight, the final docket for the Capital Facility Plan, and I think that stands. Item.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I hope to give you an update on the utilities, utilities, comprehensive facilities plan. I know Brandon has been here, I think, last month, I think, to the day almost, to give you an update on the transportation engineering components of this plan. So our presentations are going to look fairly similar, so there's a number of slides that I just, I won't go over unless there's questions and particular details around, you know, how the plans are formed and things along those lines. But I know, you know, most of you are fairly well informed on that stuff. So I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully, you see the right screen and not my notes. Does that look about right?
Looks good.
All right, fantastic. I don't really have any notes anyway to hide, but it's just a different view. So anyway, we'll kind of just jump right in here to this. Get this to jump. I think we did. There we go. Okay, you know, general, what is a general facilities plan? You know, these are plans that really kind of help set the guidelines for the, or the guidance for the city's staff to develop projects to help improve the services that we provide. I'm going to focus on utility projects, which is the water sewer and storm drain utilities. As you know, many of these projects are identified through planning processes that run the gamut from the urban forestry management plan all the way through the economic plans. And then with the utilities and specifics, we have the Comprehensive Water System Plan, Sewer Plan, as well as a stormwater, or a stormwater plan. The Water System Plan is required for update every 10 years. We did our last update, I think it was adopted in 2021. And then we have our last sewer plan, which was adopted in 2015, and our stormwater plan that was 2018. Those are not necessarily regulatorily required for updates, but we do have updates programmed in periodically throughout the planning horizon just to make sure that we are continuing to integrate the best available information that we have to our projects. The projects I'm going to present to you tonight, many are not new. We do have a couple of new projects in each of the utilities. I will go over those with you, when I can also answer any questions that you might have on existing projects. But those are generally ones that the city council and planning commission have seen in previous years. Many of them are ongoing. Many of them take some time, particularly the more significant planning efforts that we have. But the plan you have in front of you tonight represents about $123 million in total projects, with the largest bulk of that in the water utility, very expensive utilities you can imagine to operate and maintain, followed by our stormwater utility, a number of the regulations that came out of the, or that continue to come out of the, the city's stormwater permit, the National Discharge Elimination System Phase Two permitting process from the EPA down through ecology to the city, has a number of requirements for us to continuously monitor, update, and create new facilities for stormwater. So that's the second largest rate you'll see there for about $30 million, and followed by our sewer plan, which has some projects that support proposed planning growth and as well as ongoing maintenance needs for our system. So the drinking water utility, and please feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. I'll try to keep my eyes on the hands that might go up, or if I see little icons on your, on the video screen there. Try and be responsive to that as well. For the drinking water utility, you know, these again are projects that are supporting our system, our security improvements, our water quality enhancements, source water development and mitigation, these are new water rights. These are mitigation for those water rights. As you likely know, they find the city acquires new water rights, there is an offset for any impacts that are identified in the environment or to other wells or systems in the area. That's a very expensive line right there, source development mitigation, and those are also very time intensive. We are embarking on kind of a new source development review project, let's talk about in a moment. And that really is, we're anticipating that overall from end to end, it'll probably just take about 10 years before we in some fashion start that project over again. And as we continue to grow and support new customers, both commercial and residential. And then the last kind of major bucket for the drinking waters, CFP, is the infrastructure projects. Those are projects that are to replace aging infrastructure, you know, or build new infrastructure to serve and accommodate for growth that might be coming into the system, as well as number of programs that we have out there, or are proposed to be out there. And major planning efforts, as I talked about with the comprehensive system plan, that will be kicking off in 2028, I believe. Funding, we have only a few areas for funding for projects in the water, drinking water utility that's covered by rates. Those are the charges that our residential and commercial customers pay on a monthly basis, you know, for the water that they're consuming. And we have connection fees. Those are the fees that new development pays to basically buy into the system, so to speak, and accommodate for that growth that, that the city has prepared for and planned for and already constructed in advance to help offset those costs for the city. And then, of course, one of our favorite lines, the state and federal grants, those are growing in capacity and number for availability for the city, as we're seeing with the infrastructure bill recently passed, last couple of years, opening up some opportunities for the city there. And then, of course, bonds, loans, and other kinds of debts, which the city currently does not have. It's not a bad thing for the city to acquire some debt to help kind of take on some major projects and, and kind of, you know, particularly those that are serving future growth and development. Then those costs are borne by those customers that come on in later years as well. And then a very small bucket for the drinking water utility is others, donations, interest earnings, miscellaneous revenues. So we have about 14 projects that make in almost each one of the funds, kind of totaled out about 14 projects for drinking water and storm and sewer. Only two new projects, two or three new projects in most of these utilities. Again, we'll cover those specifically. We've had a couple, we've checked a couple of boxes off on our drinking water CFP, one being the Israel Road and Linderson Water Main Upsizing and Replacement Project. You will see that ongoing. You've already seen, for those of you who have driven into City Hall tonight, you have seen the results of that work or the beginnings of that work, not necessarily the results just yet, but we anticipate that will be done by the end of the year. So we're calling that one completed as we're going through this process here. And then we have the Capital Trosper and Sixth Water Main Replacement that we took, we took the opportunity to upgrade some of our facilities and the infrastructure in the vicinity of all that transportation work that's happening there at Capital Trosper, as you see. The first new project we have for the drinking water is well 15. It is our second largest producer in the city, behind the Bushwell Field. And it is probably one of our facilities most in need of upgrade. So we intend to, over the course of the next year or so, plan for those upgrades. We're talking about probably not about $950,000 to improve the well site itself, harden it with a little, with more security, and upgrade it to our current security standards, and then also looking to include some corrosion control. The city utility has been undergoing some work with the Department of Health these last couple of years. Some of you may have read about or participated in our lead and copper sampling program that is used to identify any needs within our system to help control pH, to protect the, the, the end users drinking water, because this is generally something that we'll see kind of be a problem at the site, not necessarily from a production standpoint or a delivery standpoint, but it'll be generally a challenge with some of the older homes that might have lead and copper fixtures within their facilities. This is a project where we talk about to install corrosion control treatment at multiple production sites. Well 15, being again the second largest producer, will help balance those water quality needs for our residents. The next, the new project?
Oh, Dan, hold on. We have a question from Commissioner Tobias.
Yes, I have a quick question on the well 15 improvement. I noticed the site on property owned by the Port of Olympia through perpetual easement. Can you tell me more about what that perpetual evening entails as far as both responsibilities for maintenance versus control over, or who is sort of in charge of the site itself?
The larger site, Port of Olympia maintains control, you know, and, you know, has maintenance requirements for it. There is a small, want to say like maybe a 50 by 50 footprint postage stamp in the middle of one of their parcels where the well 15 currently sits. And we have responsibility for maintenance and control of that smaller piece. One of the reasons we haven't upgraded this in the, in the past is because it was, there was uncertainty about what the ultimate disposition of that property was going to be. However, as the, as I mentioned, the second largest producing well in the city, the flexibility to replace that well in some other location, you know, is very limited. We want to continue to maintain this site, and we'll work with the port to make sure that, that perpetual easement, which, you know, in theory lasts in perpetuity, perpetuity, I can't, never say that word, perpetuity, for us to always have access to be able to utilize that well. And so, you know, it's really, you know, on us to continue to maintain that property and then protect it in the ways that any other well within the city, as you, as a, is similar to well 11, which is right in front of the fire station there, kind of in that park-like setting across the way. So we want to basically build, you know, kind of build this well up to those standards and protect it in that, in those ways, as well as add some additional treatment to it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'll just take this moment of interruption to note for the record that Vice Chair Sullivan joined us as well as Commissioner Von Holt. Go ahead, go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, I arrived at 7:05. I had a Zoom issue.
Great. Thank you. Glad you're here.
Okay, so the, the next new project on the drinking water side of, that you'll also see in the sanitary sewer. It is also a component of the Israel and Linderson Way improvements that I had mentioned that we had completed this year. We have, we're adding components of seismic resiliency into our system at some known locations. Like I said, as, as Israel Road, the water main there is being upgraded to also include some mechanical features that help us mitigate impacts from a, from a, you know, a large seismic event. But we also recognize that there is some significant planning that we need to do to continually look at the entirety of the city from a protection standpoint. Where are the, the gathering points, the emergency centers? You know, how do we protect the, the water system through there? Are there different elements that we can add to our water system plant or our water system production sites? Treatment capacities, ways that we can protect those facilities as well to the best of our ability. So this would be a plan that would be, be looking at, kind of doing in coordination with our sewer utility, to looking at both our water and our sewer facilities to make sure that, you know, to the extent that, you know, anybody can predict how, how impacted a, a utility like that would be, we have some, we'll put some planning in place and then eventually be planning additional upgrades throughout our city to protect against those types of events. As I mentioned, the remaining 12 projects are either ongoing in some fashion or looking forward to getting done here in the near term. The source development, as I mentioned, is a multi-year, 10, 10, 12-year process before you repeat it and start the whole thing over again. We have the brewery wellfield. It's been a major project. It's been on our books for a long time. We've just restarted conversations with our consultant for the permitting or for the design and permitting of the brewery wellfield, the infrastructure in and of itself. We're also ongoing conversations with our partners, Lacy and Olympia, on those, with those water rights to make sure that we're putting those to the fullest beneficial use and the partners that need them have them. Those conversations are ongoing, so that also, you know, entails our water rights acquisition. We have identified some deficits on our long-term planning horizon, which every year gets shorter. So we want to make sure that we're out there looking for, where is that next incoming of water coming for the city? Water rights in a closed basin like the Deshues Basin, which serves a majority of our city, are very difficult to come by. And so we do have a couple of opportunities we're going to examine in greater detail and hopefully create some pathways that the city can acquire those, you know, over time before they either expire or are sold to other properties. The wellfield, abandonment of the existing, existing wells, once we have the wellfield up and running and we have some of the other issues that are kind of settling in front of us done, we'll be able to start the abandonment of those wells down at the golf course. And I know Chuck Denny and the Parks Department are, would be overjoyed to see those old abandoned wellhouses go away down there. But at about $400,000 between us and our partners, not necessarily an inexpensive project. Programs and planning, we have a couple of items that are still there, the ERP, which is the, the kind of the planning software, the business software that city operates, runs its utility billing through, its permitting systems, its asset management programs, all of that. That's underway currently throughout the city. As I mentioned, we still have a comprehensive plan update, but that's not for a couple of years. Those will always be on our, on our radar. We have funds set aside for water main replacement and extension. And, and as I mentioned earlier, looking forward to growth with the new development and also looking at what are the fixtures, what are the assets that we need to have in place to be able to serve growth in the future? One of those is Southeast Reservoir and the system extension along 93rd Avenue. We currently don't have customers lined up for those, or generally where the city would require development to build some of these, these fixtures. But we want to be ahead of those developments so that they are in place and ready to go when development comes along. The reservoir will also help address some deficiencies for the city, involve fire flow and pressures, kind of balance the system out. Having reservoirs scattered throughout the city also adds to our resiliency in the case of emergencies. As you know, the O N M. Okay.
Looking at the Southeast Reservoir, it looks like the largest financial program this upcoming year. And I'm looking at the financial data, and it shows no expenditures in future years. It looks to me like we're borrowing $18 million. Are we going to pay it all back in six years?
No, those expenditures would be incorporated once we get the, the funds from finance or once we get the information from finance, the kind of the debt service would be incorporated in there. And they should have been if they're not, and so that could be, that might have been an error with the printing, but they should have been incorporated in there, and I can get you an updated copy of those. You don't have that one there. But no, generally in the debt service, we do incorporate those into the, into the planning for these, so that way we can, we can demonstrate to the city as well as Department of Health, we have the capacity to pay for these, these projects over time. Thank you. Yes, and you're absolutely correct. The Southeast Reservoir has turned into a fairly significant financial obligation for the city as we move forward. And you know, as I'll talk about in a moment, these, there are some costs for some of these projects that have really ballooned from previous years and previous estimates, mostly due to, you know, the marketing conditions right now, the delays in getting equipment and personnel on, on hand to be able to run these projects and the parts for them as well. So, but thanks for getting it. Let's see, and then, of course, we have the, some infrastructure projects. Really, those are just asset improvements, upgrades to serve, you know, the growing demands and the pressures that are on the, on the system itself. Sanitary Sewer, CFP, if there's nothing, no other questions on the water, we'll move over to sanitary sewer. Sanitary Sewer, very similar to the water, very similar, infrastructure replacement expansion programs. There are a number of planning efforts to make sure that we have the right facilities in the right place with the right capacity and that we look forward to growth, you know, we provide some support to bring in additional customers and support both residential and commercial growth in those ways. Very similar to the water, we have both rates and connection fees to support those projects and those programs, as well as grants and debts in that way as well. Couple of the projects that we've completed, going backwards now, a couple of the projects we've completed, again, relate to this Capitol Boulevard, the, the Trosper Roundabout Projects, took the opportunity to get there to replace some projects. And we've done some work to evaluate sustainability efforts throughout our system and where things like solar power might be an opportunity for the city to reduce its carbon footprint in those ways. The new plan, as I mentioned, under the water system, this is seismic resiliency plan. This is the sewer systems component of that. One of the reasons for the large discrepancy between the two funds is because, you know, we've done some initial planning on the water system plan as part of our last water system plan update, and we have not done any of that planning yet under the sewer plan. So a bulk of the, the funding will be coming from the sewer plan to address those, those previous elements that were done for water. One of the items that looks at, also, you know, looks at growth, looks at current capacity of our system, make sure we can maintain the flows and basically convey the wastewater down to lot the way we can. Kimmy Street was identified as a deficiency in our last waters or sewer, sewer plant deck. And this would do an engineering evaluation, look at that, yeah, look at that as a whole, provide some resiliency, putting a generator down there for emergency conditions and update the technology that we use to control that lift station. Those are two new projects that we've got identified. The remaining, the ongoing and annual programmatic pieces include the infrastructure replacement program. The, that's really kind of looking at kind of a methodical formulated project or, you know, you know, annually designed and construction in the following years to update and replace our infrastructure. Our oversizing program is, we have one in our water facility as well. This basically is for development that's coming online. And they might need, let's say, a two-inch line or a four-inch line, but the city plans call for an eight-inch or a 12-inch to be consistent throughout the city. This is where the city would participate financially in those projects, you know, with the developer to, to install what the city needs versus just what the project might need. Our sewer extension program is one that we hope to kind of work with community development and other stakeholders throughout the city to kind of work towards. This is one where the city would look at providing funding and/or construction capacity for extending sewer into neighborhoods that have, are predominantly served by septic systems today, where they might be at higher risk for groundwater contamination, which is a source of drinking water for the entire city, or there might be other environmental impacts or health impacts that we'll be looking at. Some of you might have been around in 2015 when the city participated in the regional septic summit with Thurston County, Lacy and Olympia, and the Lockley Water Alliance. Through that work, there was a number of areas identified throughout the city, you know, that were higher, higher risk than others. And so those would be priority areas for, for us to be focusing on the development of that program. There's Nastwick there, it's, it's a, it means it's just, it's something that we are continuing to look at, but there are a lot of, kind of a moving, a lot of moving parts with a program like that, particularly around funding and, you know, making sure that funding is available for that kind of work. It is expensive to convert homes and even more expensive to convert entire neighborhoods. The Comprehensive Business Plan Update, it's in progress. We're starting that this year. We anticipate that'll carry over probably for the next year and a half, potentially two years to upgrade, update that plan. Again, the last one was done in 2018. We have the ERP system again. I mentioned that earlier. I hear a question? No?
Yes, Commissioner Tobias.
So, item number SS06, the Streamland Estates Lift Station. Program description, it says it will upgrade the lift station to account for model deficiencies to accommodate growth in the system. The existing system has an oversized wet well. So if the, the wet well is oversized, but you're trying to accommodate new growth in the system, what does that, what does that entail for a project like this? What, what makes a wet well oversized for growth need?
The wet well might be appropriately sized, it might be oversized, and so the wet well might not necessarily be the thing that we're going to be addressing there. I have to go pull up the plant specs specifically to that one, and I can get back to you on, on, on the SAP road one. But, you know, other things like technology, pump size, do we have enough pumps? Is there, is there redundancy in those pumps to make sure that if one fails, we continue to have that capacity to push the wastewater flows through there in light of new developments? We might have some smaller pumps that have been installed that would need to get done to upgrade that ability to be able to push that water through and get to the places that it needs to go. I can get you a more complete project description. Those are very just basic descriptions in the, in the CFP there for that.
So does a lift station, a lift station pump up the wastewater to, and get it out? Or is that pumping fresh water to go into homes?
It's pumping wastewater down to basically the treatment plant. So you'll have the lift stations at the lowest points in the system, and then they'll have to pump that water or that wastewater up to another point so that it can discharge basically down to the lock treatment center and then be returned to the city and either through reclaimed water or discharged from the treatment plant.
Gotcha. I think I have seen that. I didn't know that's what it was called on SAP road is where that lift station is. Gotcha, I think I have seen that, I didn't know that's what it was called on SAP Road is where that lift station is.
Correct, so basically the lift stations are, like I said, they're at the kind of the lowest point in those basins. All of the private homes will, you know, generally gravity drain to that lift station. That lift station collects it all in those in those wet wells, and then from there it pumps up and out to the treatment center. Or to the next lift station, depending on the location of it. Um, so and and, you know, in there as well as also placement holder for some growth of a regional pump station, hasn't been identified yet, but the city does reserve funds should. Development occur in a place that hasn't been forecasted specifically, and so there are some funds set aside to help with development. Of, you know, for a pump station where it might be needed somewhere. We also have, again, the infrastructure maintenance elements. The I five sanitary sewer main crossings report is going to be a fun one because we have a fairly significant line across I five. And basically we'll have to run cameras and have a number of interesting engineering evaluations, provide us a report on how those lines are actually doing. I five definitely makes it challenging to operate a system through there. Are any other questions on the sanitary sewer?
Not seeing any.
Well, it's stormwater. Um, you know, stormwater is includes, you know, very similar elements, not as much mechanical elements as the water in the sewer. But has a similar, you know, gravity issues, there are main pipes, there are collection. Facilities that, you know, ponds and water treatment facilities that need to be maintained and taken care of and replaced over time. This accounts for those, this also accounts for the city's programs that look at, you know, mitigating floods where they might exist, either. You know, it might be threatening development or roadways, and so this will help, you know, mitigate those issues. Water quality and habitat conservation, looking at our receiving waters, whether they be creeks like, you know, personal creek or the Deschutes River. Or wetlands throughout throughout town, we make sure the water that we're discharging is treated to some level. The implementation of our drainage manual helps us accomplish a lot of that. But there is additional needs that exist out there that might have been installed, you know, pre drainage manual or any water quality treatment standards that might have existed. Then habitat conservation, looking at making sure that, you know, again, we're limiting our impacts and doing, you know, what we can to preserve. Some of the green spaces and spaces for wildlife and habitat that or in other creatures that rely upon our surface waters. For their existence. And then, of course, significant planning efforts, we don't necessarily plan for growth in in this. We do, we do occasionally, but we're really looking at, you know, kind of development, the application of our drainage manual that helps us align for growth. Not actually building facilities like we would do with the water or sewer plan. And then, of course, you know, the storm drain CFP helps us support a lot of the permit requirements that come through from the federal. EPA down through ecology, the National Declute and Discharge Elimination System, the MPDS permit the city has. For its stormwater, which really touches and affects all departments across the city. And managed by Water Resources. Our funding is a little different as well, really only three, we don't have any connection fees, development doesn't buy into the system as they would, you know, in a water or sewer. Program, but they do, development builds those systems, and so when we have a new development go in, they do frontage improvements, they're doing stormwater improvements. In many cases, those stormwater improvements become part of the city's system. And the city would then take those over and maintain those into the future. So in many ways, the private development helps build and extend their cities or those facilities in the current standards that we have today. And of course, grants, we rely pretty heavily on grants, you know, for our stormwater. Program and have not acquired any bonds, loans or debt yet. We anticipate that's going to change in the coming years with the CFP, particularly around operation maintenance facilities and some of those larger expenditures like that. Uh, we've completed two of the projects on the previous CFP. The Lee Street Bio retention retrofit, you know, as with water and sewer, there are a lot of those improvements being done. Around the Trosper interchange improvements that are done, that we have, we had opportunities to align some of these projects and to give provide some water quality treatment. Where previously didn't exist with that Lee Street Bio retention and then the Deschutes River Flood Reduction Erosion Study. City acquired a grant that allowed us to take a really close look at the Tumwater Brewery Valley and Deschutes River Valley. As it kind of goes through those develop those 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 properties, former brewery properties. And understand in a better way, you know, the conditions that create the flooding at that at those properties and. What are the tools that would need to be used to mitigate for that flooding? The outcome of that study gives the city some information that we can provide to private development in terms of. What are, you know, what are the kind of anticipated costs and, you know, what level of risk could development take on? To provide for any future down there, the reality is, the reality is, there's always going to be some level of flooding. At least that's what modeling was telling us, and, you know, even with pretty. Intense investment, just to mitigate for the floods, there's still a level of risk for most development that would happen down there, given some of the constraining features. Of that lower watershed. But we got that done, and again, gives the city some information that we can provide to others, should there be a strong interest in moving some kind of development program, development projects in that area. Um, kind of the first project I'll show you on here that's new, I call it new-ish, we've reserved funds for habitat land acquisition in previous CFPs. We kind of, I upgraded it really to kind of focus on, you know, conserving lands and other properties that might be needed for mitigation as well. Previously, this line was really just kind of focused on mitigation for projects. You know, acquiring land to mitigate for, say, the Tumwater Valley Regional Stormwater Facility, things like that. You know, this, you know, the city has a greater need, and so we've upgraded this project to include significant more funding. I think it's grown from about three hundred thousand dollars in previous CFPs to what we have here, about three point three million dollars. Potentially look at some opportunities that might exist in the near term for us, you know, around the former brewery properties. You know, should there be some opportunities with property owners currently down there to provide some habitat conservation. As well as some Kursop area wetlands, one of the largest wetland complexes the city has. And looking at other wetland areas through the Deschutes Riot thirteen watershed. That would also relate to mitigation for some of our stormwater impacts. Uh, and then new wasn't on our last plan, but comprehensive stormwater management plan update. This is a kind of a plan that brings all of the other little basin plans together and really helps the city kind of refocus. Kind of that, take that, that's that thirty thousand foot altitude view of of our stormwater management program. Making sure that we're being compliant with permit requirements. And if if we do find gaps, how do we fix those and are, do we have enough staff to operate our our utility effectively? And we anticipate that getting started in a couple of years, it'd be about a ten-year update for us. As we're trying to align with both the water and the sewer as well on tenure cycles for those. Uh, third new project that we have for stormwater is the East Dennis Outfall retrofit. You know, we do have a number of areas, some smaller tributaries that don't have treatment currently or don't currently meet. Standards if those were to be developed today, this is a project to address one of those outfalls. Couple of years out, but, you know, we space these out to, you know, in areas of priority for us. But this is a new one that will be added to the to the program longer term to address as we as we can get there and get some funding for that. You know, as I mentioned, we rely heavily on grants, you can see that, you know, this project is significantly funded for grants as we get down there down the road. Our previous and ongoing projects, we can kind of lump those into water quality, habitat, fish, flooding mitigation. The infrastructure maintenance similar to water and sewer and planning as well as similar to water and sewers there. The water quality habitat fish bucket, so to speak, those are a number of outfall retrofit projects, Tumwater Valley Regional Facility. We have the Deschutes Habitat Restoration Projects, those are a number of projects that have been identified through various reports. Over the last fifteen or so years, and these are working with the golf course and various in the city as the primary landowner. Throughout that Deschutes Corridor, provide some restoration efforts there as well. The East Basin, East Linwood Basin Outfall retrofit kind of is aligning itself nicely to work with the Tumwater Valley Regional Facility, if we can get those projects done. Concurrently, that would be great, so we're currently out looking for some grant funding, you know, for those projects. And those have been ongoing and and we've, we've taken some runs at those in the past and we've both experienced some various challenges. From a design standpoint or from a permitting standpoint. What we're trying to do now is align them so that those two projects can can be done collaboratively since they are. Kind of in the same same space and will provide similar treatment to the water. SAP Road Culvert Replacement, one of our first major culvert replacements in the city. This has been identified as a fish barrier, fish passage barrier, a hundred percent obstruction. That is in its design phase right now, we've been awarded construction funding, so we anticipate we'll get that done. In the next two years, once we finish up with our permitting that we're in the place in kind of in the process of. And another one very similar, which we will begin in future years, sixty-sixth Avenue Culvert, another one. Kind of just upstream of a major fish passage project that the county completed off of Kennydale Park. This would further open up kind of the Kursop wetlands for for fish migration. Um, on the mitigation, the flooding mitigation side, these continue to be projects that were identified in the twenty twelve annexation report. After the city acquired all the lands on the west side of Tumwater, and so these are still, these are conveyance and water quality treatment. Projects that would help mitigate some of the flooding that we experience out there, undersized culverts. And conveyance culverts, not necessarily fish passage culverts and some other. Upgrades to the existing systems out there, the ditches that exist out there. And then we have a pond over in the Kreitz and the Mottman Industrial Area that is in need of some significant upgrades as well as on there as well. And that's really kind of the overview of all of the projects, any any questions there with stormwater?
Mr. Cap?
Yeah, if I look at the six-year forecast for all three program areas. We start out with a very healthy fund balance. And at the end of six years, we're down to right around a million dollars, we've spent. A lot of money and we haven't kept much to service debt in the future, is this something we should be worried about?
Uh, we are, like I said, we are gonna, we were, we should have incorporated debt service into those. Again, I'm going to take a double look at that one, especially on the on the water side to make sure that we're capturing that, but that is, that should be integrated into these plans to make sure that we can cover that. The bottom lines of these plans really address the reserves that were either required by state to maintain as well as our internal policies to maintain. So, you know, the the end, the end result after, you know, the six years of these projects. Should leave the city in a place where our reserves are met, we're able to meet our debt obligations, you know, and projects are moving forward. And this is, you know, also, you know, as as you know, is also kind of, it's collaborative with our budget, and so we're making sure that, you know. The funds are available for that to happen, part of that is looking at the rate increases. You can see here is, you know, my next slide is really about, you know, yes, is addressing just that, that we are struggling, you know, we are, we've had, we've seen some projects come in. You know, due to inflation and the market forces at a much higher. Dollar figure that we've seen previously. That Southeast Reservoir project that you identified earlier, that's a hundred and thirty-two percent the previous planning efforts, and that's really just a reflection of our existing. Market conditions, both labor and material costs have skyrocketed. To increase these, someone from, I think, nine million dollars to a twenty million dollar project. So fairly significant increases that we're seeing there, overall, we're seeing the water in the sewer about thirty-five percent to thirty-seven percent. Increases on projects cost on average, you know, the Boyd Street Streamland Estates. Projects increased to a hundred and ten percent, so, you know, we recognize that and market conditions could change in the future. You know, and so that might help balance some of these out a little bit, but right now, as we're going through this planning process, we recognize that, you know, those are having some real major impacts. On the on the utilities, storm with itself, you know, just with the the cost for land, the cost for, again, labor predominantly. We've seen a hundred and fifteen percent increase, you know, in those project costs. That's affected affected that CFP in general. So we're looking at, you know, we're looking at all of those tools, those mechanisms for the revenues, so we're looking at what do rate increases look like? What do connection fee increases look like? The water utility itself. You know, we've we've identified a lot of those projects are significantly supporting growth. And one of the ways that we help pay for growth is through connection fees. And so, you know, you should see on the bottom there that, you know, there are some significant increases in our connection fees. One, to try and match, you know, the rate increases that we're seeing with our, at our, you know, for our residential, commercial customers or consumption customers. But also to recognize that, you know, a lot of the investment the city is going to be making over the next few years, whether it's. You know, infrastructure, you know, the addition of new infrastructure, or if it's looking for projects that. You know, where's the next water rights coming from, and those major efforts for the source development, those are really serving development. And, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, the investments are appropriately applied. Kind of as part of that, we will be evaluating kind of that cost of service for our water utility in particular. We already have a consultant on board that we're going to be working with over probably the next. Year to, you know, evaluate our rates, look at our connection fees, you know, look at that kind of the financial planning for our water utility. Yeah, you know, make sure that, you know, the rates are covering our operational costs and the connection fees, you know, are supporting our our growth projects and things like that, so. You know, we've identified those stressors, we're looking at, you know, ways that we can make sure that those are balanced, that we have appropriate increases. The revenue streams to support, you know, what we just recognize as regular kind of operational costs. And the increases that we just normally experience there, whether it's fuel or staffing, you know, for the city, things like that. We generally, we're, if I would like to say we're in a better place than some utilities where, you know, we program in, you know, at least three percent every year to kind of manage those costs. But there are a number of those unseen, those inflation factors this this year alone have created some of these conditions for us. So I'm hopeful the next CFP, we see a little bit of balance with these costs coming back into some kind of. Kind of some ability to forecast the the future costs over some of these projects, but what we've seen this year is is fairly significant from from previous years, so.
Dan, is that, are are, you just mentioned that some some other utility operators are having maybe. Little different experience with their with their bids or their cost?
Well, not, I'm sorry, not not with their bids or their costs. Other utilities, you know, in some cases don't provide, they don't provide for like a, say, a three percent annual increase on their rates or their connection fees. You know, and so, you know, in many cases, you'll see, you know, and you tend to see this with smaller providers out there where they're trying to keep. You know, their rates, because their operational costs are very expensive to begin with, so they're trying to keep rates low, but then when conditions like this, you know, really can create a need. You know, you'll see some of these systems, you know, upwards of twenty, forty percent, you know, increases on their rates in a given year, so. You know, the size of our system, the constituency of our of our, or the kind of diversity of our customers. You know, and the fact that, you know, we try and keep up with just regular kind of growth and inflation every year with that three percent kind of helps. Balance, you know, some of those rate increases out for us. Every, I would say that many utility providers across the state are experiencing very similar reactions to what bids are coming in for. Coming in is much higher than engineering estimates, and so that that's a fairly common experience that we're having.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's kind of where I was going was, you know, is this just a an outlier for a few for a few things, it sounds like it's across the board, kind of the system wide.
Correct. And that's really all I've got for you tonight, this is kind of just kind of looking, look ahead right here, we're in August. I know Brad's got a number of things scheduled out in the coming coming months and weeks and. Like I said, I'll take a look at that that question around the debt service for the water, and make sure you have the most current copies in front of you. And should there be a need to bring things back, we're certainly, I'm certainly willing and able to do that for you as well. And of course, if there are any questions that come up to you later, please feel free to reach out to me and and I'll get whatever information I. And of course, if there are any questions that come up to you later, please feel free to reach out to me and and get whatever information I can to you.
Great. It looks like Commissioner Edwards has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, kind of just going back to what we were talking about for a second. So with the rate increases and everything, have there been any kind of looking into what grant opportunities or other kind of funding sources that might help take some of the the costs going forward instead of just increasing the rates or?
Of course, we're always looking for grant opportunities, you know, for our water system and our sewer system. Sewer is in a, in a fairly healthy space and there's generally not a lot of grants for available for like, you know, for our system on water or sewer side, predominantly because we are not a disadvantaged community. You know, and so we don't have that demographic to be able to really kind of go after some of those types of programs. But we can get, we can get low interest loans. We do look at those options, you know, as well. We do try and participate in grant programs where they might exist for planning efforts and things like that. You know, for, as an example, the sewer extension program, we're looking at doing septic, kind of septic system conversions. You know, we're looking at grant funding for those types of programs where water quality is served. You know, it depends on the number of homes and those types of things. So we, we do look for those types of opportunities all the time. They're just more limited in the water and the sewer side.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, any other questions? Comments? Thanks, Dan. Good presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
One scheduled thing I'd like to mention, we're, the planning commission is scheduled to take consideration of all these things at your second meeting in in September.
Okay.
We'll probably have the public hearing first in October.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's see, let's go on to item nine, the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan periodic update and the land use component.
If you don't mind talking amongst yourselves as I pull up the presentation and I forgot to pull up before the meeting. Apologize to everyone on the screen. Everybody remote, see the exciting presentation, note again, the exciting new colors, all that. We're moving away from the darkness into the light.
So pretty. It looks great.
Okay, today we're going to talk a little bit about the land use element, which is one of the many elements in plans with a comprehensive plan. The intent really tonight is to give you enough background that you could look at the current plan and also sort of understand the general structure and the general requirements for the update. We're going to take another look at this at the first meeting in September. So as we're going through this, if you come up with questions or other things that you think we should be covering at that meeting, please let me know. Because I can certainly add that to what we have planned for discussion, which is really sort of take a deeper dive into the individual policies and got the goals in the land use element. So let me get started. Again, feel free to interrupt me as you need. If you have any questions and if I can't see you, Elizabeth, you can let me know if somebody's.
There's, they're helping me out too.
Okay. The intent is to sort of walk you through the Growth Management Act goals, which are really the foundation of everything that we are doing as part of the comprehensive planning process to begin with. Give you a snapshot of the current version of the element. We're going to start discussions about how we can incorporate diversity, equity, inclusion throughout. And we're going to start with the land use element. This discussion will be helped immensely when we talk about the housing element at your next meeting. Because that is a required component of the housing element, but we're just going to borrow that and use it for everything because it makes more sense that way. But there's a, a pretty detailed process outline there that we'll get into in more detail at that time. Talk a little bit about some of the general topics related to the update as well, the specific issues that land use element has to address. And we'll sort of start a discussion of proposed amendments and the state guidance materials. We'll also talk a little bit about the, where we are in the public engagement process, website and and those kinds of things as well. So starting first with the growth management goals. There are fifteen goals that the state has included in the Growth Management Act. Originally, there were thirteen. They've been adding them as we go. And also, they've made some very significant changes to a number of these goals in the past couple of years. So I'll try to touch on that as much as possible. As we're reviewing these, you'll note that not everything works neatly together. So we'll talk a little bit of how that also is supposed to work.
As you're going through these, if there's, if there's a, either a good dovetail or an utter disconnect with Tumwater's goals, would you point it out? I don't think we have that, but it's.
I don't, yeah, we will have to, and then just as a little background information, we basically have to demonstrate in the comp plan that we address each of these. In the land use element, in the beginning, in the first chapter, you'll notice a section where we talk about each of the goals as they existed in two thousand sixteen and how the plan addresses those items. I'm not seeing dramatic things that we're out of focus with. There are some new requirements that I don't think we cover as well, but I don't think it's a dramatic, my God.
We're largely in compliance with.
We're largely in compliance, but there, we have a lot of work to do, is what it comes down to. First and foremost, and since it's the Growth Management Act, we talk about urban growth. And really, this is the encouraging development in urban areas where we have existing public facilities and service that exist or can be provided in an efficient manner. Really, that's kind of the heart of the act to begin with. That means we want to focus any new population growth and everything, for the most part, within the cities, within the urban areas where it's the most efficient place to serve them with transportation and all the other public services that are part of that. We have been doing some check-ins to see how we're doing on that. I think the first, you know, say fifteen or so years of the act being in place since nineteen ninety, we didn't really see a huge sea change. What we were getting before, we were still getting. But that's probably the legacy of multiple projects that have been in the pipeline, that were just basically being built, that we hadn't got to the point yet where we're getting into the new things that were under the new rules. We have started definitely to see a change and see more of the growth coming into the city than is the county than previously. When you look at things like our Sustainable Thurston Plan, however, we're not hitting the goals that that plan set out yet. They had even lofted, they actually set particular numbers of what they wanted to see within the urban area to the county and so forth. So, you know, we're on our way, but we're not, we're not there yet. Related to that is reducing sprawl. And that's the conversion of undeveloped land into low-density sprawling development, which increases costs for transportation, services and everything else. You may not realize it for, you know, you, well, you realize it when you pay for it initially and then you'll realize it in about twenty, thirty years' time when you have to replace everything. Then the costs will come up again. Related, of course, is transportation. And there is a couple of new elements to this I want to call your attention to. First of all, multimodal transportation has really been a part of the act since the beginning. So it's not just cars, it's everything else. But also added in two thousand twenty-three is how do we use the transportation system to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled? So what that typically means is really focusing on number one and number two. So you don't have to build out, you know, where people can live nearer to where they may work and buy groceries and whatever else, so then, you know, reducing travel that way. But this is a new thing that we're going to have this year, we're not talking about what we're probably not necessarily in compliance with yet, is how we're going to actually address those two things. We started it through our climate mitigation plan. I think we've identified some actions that could definitely be brought in and incorporated. But I think I'm interested to see how this will work out with our transportation plan, because that will be another big part of this whole update. Number four, the housing, plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population, variety of housing densities and types, and preservation of existing housing stock. The big changes in two thousand twenty-two were to add affordable to all economic economic segments of the population and not merely plan for. But there's a lot more we have to do than just say, well, this draw, you know, it could happen. Economic development, I'm not going to go through this whole thing. Some minor changes have occurred recently, but again, really the point here is to recognize that everyone in the city should have the ability, have economic opportunity. And it doesn't specify what that should be, what particular businesses it should be. It just says economic development and the most appropriate way. Property rights, this has not changed since the adoption. This is also very important because really emphasizing what our, not only our state constitution says, but also the federal constitution, that private property can't be taken for public use without just compensation. That's the fundamental, what we have to do in land use. And our private rights of landlords shall be protected from arbitrary discriminatory action. That really informs what our development regulations say. And so we can, and as an example, I will use design review. We can't have statements in there that say, make it look nice. It's got to be a little more detailed than that. So it doesn't become an arbitrary, I think it looks nice, well, how do you know, kind of situation? Number seven, permits should be processed in a timely and fair manner to ensure predictability. This hasn't changed, but there was a state bill that passes past session that really, and this is the, the background of that was it wanted to support the building of more affordable housing in the state. As part of that process, they have a number of changes they want us to make to Title fourteen, which is our permit processing chapter, to basically even shorten the deadlines and and everything else that we currently have in there, which were added in ninety-five as part of a previous goal of this sort of thing. But to even be tighter in terms of what we can and can't do for that. Natural resource industries, this really doesn't touch on too much of what we have in the city. We do have a couple identified farm forest lands as part of the previous update. We'll check again to make sure those are still in place. We definitely have mineral lands that fall into this category. So, you know, obviously, th- those things, they don't move. Where they are is where they are. So that's probably the important lesson here is you don't take this, don't take those lands away and expect you're going to make it up somewhere else. Open space and recreation. Retain open space and green space, enhancing recreational opportunities, enhance fish and wildlife habitat and so forth. This has been amended to add retain green space. This is new. Not exactly sure how we define green space and how that is necessarily different from open space. But that's a new requirement in two thousand twenty-three. You'll see enhance a lot more in these. Environment, protect and enhance the environment and enhance the state's quality, high quality of life, putting air and water quality and availability of water. The key change in twenty-three was the adding the word and enhance. In the past, we've had our critical area regulations do the work of protecting. Basically identify it, put a buffer around it, leave it alone. Well, now we've got a requirement to enhance. Not sure how we're going to do that. We can definitely do it on the policy side of encouraging, but I'm still thinking how we're going to do that on the development code side of things. Citizen participation and coordination. Encourage the involvement of citizens in the planning process, including participation of vulnerable populations and underburdened, overburdened communities and ensure coordination between communities and jurisdictions to reconcile conflicts. This is obviously a very important one that pre-existed this particular update. Two things I like to call out, number one, the changes that occurred in twenty-three were to add participation of vulnerable populations and overburdened communities in the process. When we discuss the housing element update next time, we'll get a much, you'll get a much better picture of how at least the state is viewing how that would look like in terms of the update process and so forth. So we'll talk more about how that could work. The other really important part of this, in addition, obviously, letting the community know what's happening is letting other jurisdictions and agencies know what's happening. So on our end, we'll have a lot of, on the staff side, we'll have a lot of coordination we'll need to do with the county, City of Olympia, Lot, the port and so forth, other agencies who have, you know, facilities or operations that in the city are adjacent to whatever we're going to propose. We don't want necessarily to create a conflict somewhere else by doing something within the city.
Brad, on, on that point, on the, does the, does the language on that, it seems to me it goes beyond letting people know what's going on and actually providing an opportunity for them to affect what will go on.
Yeah, we encourage the involvement.
All right. Yeah, okay.
You're correct.
Yeah, okay.
Public facilities and services, this really again touches on what the public services and that will be needed to serve development are are available at the time of occupancy and use. What that really ties into is the fact that if we have a land use that is allowed within the city, whether it's say a commercial project, industrial project, or a large residential project, when those projects come in and when those projects are approved and start to be built, the facilities that are needed to serve those developments need to be accounted for and in place. Meaning the transportation improvements need to be made, the water and sewer services need to be made. Those kinds of things need to be accounted for. And also, this includes things like parks, so park services and also school services. So all of the discussions you've had on the CFP are sort of like, these are the big projects that support all that, but there's also some additional things that are coming in on the individual process, individual project basis that aren't part of the CFP that are part of this. So say, for example, a new project comes on Little Rock that requires a traffic signal or some other level of improvement in order for it to go through, you know, it will be captured as part of that development. But the, the tie there is very important because the model previously was the jurisdiction will provide everything. Development would occur and we would make sure everything happens. Well, it's a much more of a balancing act between the development and what the jurisdictions do and so forth. Historic preservation is identified, encourage, identify and encourage preservation of land site structures that have historic or archaeological significance. This is very important. We have a historic district in the city around the brewery. In addition, we do have very strong concerns or ties with the the three tribes that overlap with the city in terms of dealing with archaeological and historical cultural resources. So that all is captured in there. One thing that has occurred also this previous year is a, a requirement that we basically have to provide more effort to reach out and work with the tribes as part of this planning effort. So we're currently working on that on the countywide level. I think I had mentioned previously that we aren't updating the countywide planning policies until probably after we've finished these updates. Well, not exactly true. We are updating of, in a very minor, a minor amendments to deal with the, how do we deal with the tribes and bring them into the process. So that was one thing you'll be seeing probably this fall as we come through the process. But again, that will be sort of the art of, how we do it all and then how we do it on the local level will be another thing entirely. Two new, my Growth Management Act goals, I won't read the entire climate change and resiliency. You'll notice this is the longest of all the goals, covers a lot of ground. Everything from reducing greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled. We got climate impact scenarios, resiliency, environmental justice, and there's a lot in here. So we will, we will have a session on its own to deal with this particular one. We are fortunate, we do have a, I don't want to, a little bit of a head start by getting the climate mitigation plan and the adaptation plans done as well as the Thurston sustainability. It's probably, that could be enough, but it's a good start. The last one deals with shorelines of the state. And this is dealing with the changes in state law to tie the shoreline. in state law to tie the Shoreline Management Act into GMA much more tightly. We won't have to, we do have shorelines of the state for the deschutes and for some of the lakes and for, not Percival Creek, but for the Black Lake Drainage Ditch. We don't have to update these again until 23. So that's, we're on a, we'll be on the same cycle as the comp plan, everything else with this. Before I get into, you know, the land use element itself, I want to touch on some other general state requirements that I included in your staff report, but I didn't translate and put into the presentation. I think it's important to touch on briefly. There are seven different things that, in addition to meeting the 15 Growth Management Act goals, seven different things we have to address as part of just the land use element itself that I want to draw your attention to. The first is the need to designate the proposed general distribution and general location extent of uses of land for agriculture, timber production, which we don't have to necessarily worry about, but housing, commerce, industry, recreation, et cetera. That's important because it's, we need to, what it says is we need to be able, as part of this plan and through the land use map, show where these uses are going to be, how they relate to each other, and how big they're going to be. So that's the first thing that we deal with as part of the land use settlement. The next big thing we deal with is how do we allocate population to those areas? And then we're talking mostly about residential things, but we're also talking about jobs. We're expecting a certain number of jobs, we're expecting a certain number of people wanting to live in the city. Where are they going to go, how they're going to be accommodated? So this, this part has us deal with the densities of those populations and how appropriate it is, given the land underneath. For example, we don't want to necessarily put a high density of growth in an area like the Kursop Basin, or, you know, the wetland complex off of 54. Not a great area, you know, maybe in the old days, you just fill it in, call it good, but no, doesn't really work that way. Areas closer to the freeway, off of Capitol, served by transit, environmentally appropriate, all those kinds of things. Those things are all taken into account when we allocate densities. And also allocate and think about how intense that development would be. Building size, building height, number of people, all those kinds of things. Also, we have to take into account how we're going to protect both the quality and quantity of groundwater that we use for our water system. We draw entirely from wells in the city. We don't have reservoirs somewhere else, and so we definitely can't put particular land uses near or within the well fields of our existing system. So we have another layer that we need to do when we're considering where to put everything on the map. One additional thing that I think has been added as part of the recent updates is being, giving a special consideration to achieving environmental justice, which is, includes avoiding creating or worsening environmental health inequities. That's a new one. We have done some work with, with planning efforts like Thurston Thrives and others, but those have sort of been dormant on the environmental health side. So I'm going to be kind of interested to talk to the other jurisdictions on how they're going to, how we're going to work this, because I think we have the data, and we've had some initial attempts of how identify these are the things that would be good to consider, but we haven't had it done recently, so. Five is considering utilizing urban planning approaches that promote physical activity and reduce, here we go again, per capita vehicle miles traveled, but without increasing greenhouse gas emissions. So basically walkable communities. Not, these aren't new ideas. I mean, if these are, if you want to be honest, this is back to ancient China, everywhere else where before you, you didn't have a horse or some other means of transportation you want. But it's an explicit thing that we have to identify and deal with as part of this. We're also tasked with reviewing drainage, flooding, and stormwater runoff, not only within the city, but also how it affects other jurisdictions outside the city, primarily for a couple of reasons, obviously, to avoid flooding, but also to avoid polluting the sound, like salmon, protect a species, all those kinds of things. And lastly, this is also a new one, is reduce and mitigate risk to lives of property posed by wildfires by using land use planning tools. We talked a little bit about the Wildland Urban Interface Code, that's one thing. Other things that are part of this is making sure that we don't put high-risk development in very flammable areas, kind of self-evident, but that sometimes we need to do that. And also working as educating and other things to protect existing development. What can be done in terms of education to reach out to the community to deal with that? Any questions about either the goals or the various things that we've talked about that have to be updated as part of the land use settlement? So the structure of the current land use element, I'm just going to touch on some of these, but I think just reading a roadmap of the table of contents is a good way to get a flavor of what to look for and where. The introduction again deals with all the things, all the basics. Why are we doing this in the first place? What is the vision and the mission statement of the city? They're in the staff report, you can also see them in the, in the land use element itself. We talked about strategic plan goals, those are the goals that the city council has generated. It will be updated as part of this process. A lot of their goals sometimes are related to specifically to land use, sometimes they overlap, so we'll, we'll be talking about that. We talked about the Growth Management Act goals. The countywide planning policy compliance is similar to the, on the state level, except we're dropping down to the county level. There are 13 policies that we need to address on the countywide planning policies. Sustainable Thurston has been a part, was a part of the last update. I don't anticipate that going away because it's still part of what we planned for, but that has a lot of goals that sort of started us on the road where we're starting to deal with the things of sustainability and climate mitigation and all those kinds of things. They're still very valid, so we'll, we'll leave those in and have more discussions about those. The introduction also sort of pulls back a little bit and talks about things that aren't necessarily tied to land use element itself. So the ongoing review program really is how do we make sure all these things we're doing in the comprehensive plan, we're paying attention to and updating as we need to. It talks about how we amend the plan, what we need to do for public participation, how we're supposed to coordinate with other governments, as we talked about, how the land use element sort of sits, I don't want to say on top, but it has connections to everything else that we do in the plan. And then some very basic details of the community profile, our land use patterns, land use distribution, that kind of thing, that I think were pretty relevant in 2015, less so now. We'll, we'll be thinking about other ways to present this kind of information in more detail in the update. In section, in chapter two, we get into the designations and definitions. The first thing and most important thing, well, at least for, most important in terms of translating what's in the plan into action is the, the citywide land use map, which is basically a graphic representation of all the policies in, in, in the element. And what that does, what that means is it takes the policies and actions, has translated into land use designations, residential, particular intensity, and puts it on a map and says, this is where we want it to happen, and this is what it should look like. That in turn tells us what happens with our zoning map and our development regulations. So it all flows from that. The use categories go through each of the individual land uses, which are very similar to our zoning districts. So everything, all five of the major residential districts that we have, from the sensitive resource residential area, all the way up to our highest density multifamily, the mixed use areas, our commercial, and our industrial, and our special airport-related industry. So. One thing that we'll be adding more of, go ahead, sorry, Terry.
You touched on it a couple of times before, but as part of this process, are we going to do away with our current zoning designations like multifamily and single family and do what I think Olympia and Lacy do, just got some, a letter and a number that doesn't, doesn't say anything, it's just a designator.
Yeah, and I, my suggestion at the beginning of that, this process is yes, I think that's what we'll probably do. And the reason for that is at the state level, single-family zoning law order exists.
Neither does family.
State legislature this year basically said, there is no such thing as a zone that you can only do single-family houses in. You have to allow for missing middle, which is up to, includes, you know, fourplexes and other things. So we're dealing with less of a single-family house and a multifamily development, and now we're dealing with gradations, meaning level of intensity, how many units, how many people, you know, whatever variety of housing units on up. And so I think you're correct, Terry. We'll be moving probably more towards a model of, I don't know how it's going to look, whether it's like residential one, two, three, four, all those kinds of things, but I think it's going to be, it'll be different.
This be a product of this process, or is this a separate thing that we're going to discuss?
No, it will be part of this process. So I think as we're updating things, as we're bringing in the requirements, what we need to do as part of the process, we'll be developing a new system, not too drastically different from the current one. I mean, we're going to be allowing for more uses that we have to allow for, but it's not going to be a complete recoloring of the map, or those kinds of things, but definitely we'll be talking about changes as part of that.
Do developers of the three cities have similar categories?
Maybe, maybe not. I'm not sure if I, I, Terry, I do a lot of efforts at regional coordination. I'm not sure if I want to try that one for this. Let me, let me work first on the, on the housing and the climate and forestry, and then we can get to the land use side of things, or maybe we could talk about the Regional Fire Authority if you want to talk about coordination. But I'm not, you know, dismissing those, I'm just, I'm just thinking that's, that's another whole process to try to do that. But at the same time, we're definitely going to be paying attention to what Olympia's doing, and we're going to be paying attention to what Lacy does. I don't think necessarily we are in the same boat in terms of what we have in terms of land uses as Olympia does. We, we don't have, well, we have a little bit of a downtown, but we don't really. We have, you know, the Bureau District is the area that we're trying to, Town Center is the area that we're trying to, Capitol Boulevard Quarter is sort of taking something from the twenties, thirties, and forties that was all a stripped carb, you know, development and do something else with it. But we're slightly different from what Olympia has, and I don't think we can always draw a direct connection as much as we might like to. And to be honest, I haven't heard any complaints from developers about, gee, your land uses are so different from the other jurisdictions. That's, that's actually something I have in there. Other things, yes.
Think of our mixed use category that was created 20 years ago, and then nobody, the land just sat there because nobody liked, they didn't want to build mixed use.
Right.
So, you know, you can't force feed the development community, you have to find out what it is that they really have on their mind.
Yeah, and you're pointing out a really good point that, you know, we have, the state has basically said, throw an open, here, allow for all these different housing types to be built. I, I'm curious to see if the market's going to do anything about it, because what we can do is provide the opportunity and say, you can do it, but we are not in the business of land development. We don't have money, we don't have, you know, that kind of thing to do that. Somebody else has to develop it, meaning they have to get the loans, they have to demonstrate that whatever they build, who's going to pay back those loans? Plus, they're in a little bit of profit and all those kinds of things. So I'm, I'm curious to see how this is actually going to work. Pardon me. We're also going to be probably strengthening, adding to some of the, the uses. We talked to, state requirements again have been changed for things like open space and green spaces, play a much bigger role now. In fact, we have to designate areas like that. We currently do that, but we're probably going to have to look at how we do it and maybe be more flexible and add more to it. We also touched a little bit on design review and the importance of that. Design review is important in a land use perspective, especially when we're dealing with intensities, especially when we're dealing with issues of going from different housing types within the same community, how, how a fourplex relates to a, a single-family house, all those kinds of things. That's, that's also a design review thing, meaning we're trying to mitigate some of the impacts of these things on existing uses, but we're still allowing those uses. Design review is one way we can do that. The state, of course, has now placed additional requirements on that, so we're going to see how that works. But yeah, I'm just waiting for the state legislature next time just to take this away from us so I can concentrate on other things, that's all I'm. I'm sorry, editorial comment. Job security, that's what I should be talking about. Anyway, we talked a little bit about minimum maximum densities, how that's going to work in terms of, you know, capacity of the land, number one, to accommodate those things, transportation systems, and a whole bunch of other things. There are special things dealing with clustering manufactured housing. The reason modular and manufactured housing is called out as a, as a special section of the code, of the code is that prior to the 2015 update, there were some big changes in state law about requiring, allowing manufactured home housing to be built anywhere in the community. We couldn't say only in these areas. It's basically throughout the community, so that's part of that. You'll notice we've already touched on promoting physical activity. I think we're going to have to revisit and update that. And then we get into the land use goals, policies, and actions, and this is really sort of the heart of the element, and it's the heart of any of the elements, is what are goals and policies, and then the actions that implement those. I think we're definitely going to be talking a lot more about these as part of our next discussion, first meeting in September, but I think there's going to be a greater focus on the action side of things, meaning identifying the implementation measures we're going to do. You'll notice in the land use element, there's a special section that we don't have in other elements that is basically, here's, we go through our land use elements and policies, but we also, three, three, we have implementation policies, where we identified about two pages worth of things that we're going to do to make everything else work. I think, number one, we're going to integrate that into three, two, that, that the actions and the implementation should be the same. But I do think there's going to be a lot more connections and direct connections between policies and how we're going to be implementing, and how we're going to be measuring and monitoring, monitoring those actions and implementation measures to make sure they're doing what we think they should be doing. Word of caution. Sustainable Thurston is a fabulous document, tons of great ideas, way too many actions. There's over 100-plus actions in there, meaning that it's incredibly difficult to monitor how we're doing on all 100 of these actions. So we have to be cautious about that and think about, well, what are the really, what are the really the important things that we need to be doing? What are the really the important things we should be measuring, and how can those relate back to the most actions that we can? And I, I just say that from experience and discussing with the TRP staff, TRPC staff, who were doing a five-year look in 2019, 20, onto the Sustainable Thurston and saying, how are, how are we doing with all the things we said we're going to do? And the, the document they produced was only about 80 pages. That was the summary of how they were doing. I don't think we want to produce an 80-page document that summarizes all that we're doing. By the way, we're now required to do that. But we don't want to do that because I don't, the resources to do that is a lot, and the capacity for either the commission, or the council, or the community to understand and absorb that information is limited. So we need to be thinking about ways to make that easier, however we choose to do that. Last couple of things under the land use element deals with land supply. You'll notice, this is where they get into the details of where the population being allocated from the state, down to the county, down to the city, and we talk about where in the city it's going to go, how many acres it's going to take, and which neighborhood we'll be putting most of the things in. Now, I don't know if I'm anticipating a question from Blue Smith on this, as to what are the neighborhoods and how they were established and what their purpose is. I think I can speak to the purpose, which is really to be able to go in a little bit finer detail of the land uses within the city. So we're not sort of everything broad brush, we could focus in on a particular area and So we're not sort of everything broad brush, we could focus in on a particular area and say, in this particular area, we have these concerns, these particular uses, and do it that way. In some cases, it's tied to some historic development pattern, the brewery district, for example. In others, it seems to be more of a convenience. The neighborhoods, if you look at the acreages that have been assigned to them very dramatically, I think the brewery district is maybe 300 or so acres, and then the airport is 2,100 acres, and, and Little Rock is almost 1,900 acres. I don't know how effective that is and whether or not we're going to have to think about how to adjust those. We don't turn around and use those neighborhoods for anything else. In other jurisdictions, like say, for example, Seattle, they have a very strong neighborhood, uh, you know, first of all, where you live and you say you're in the Roosevelt neighborhood or you're whatever, there's, there's something tied to it. Here, I don't think if anybody, in some cases, yes, Tom Waterhill, people, oh yeah, I know where you live, I know what type of person you are, and there's a whole host of other stereotypes that go with it, but when you say I'm, I live in the Little Rock neighborhood, I don't think, you know, maybe it's not as strong of an identity that way.
Yeah, I think what, I think what you're getting at is that there's not that cultural identification with the, these lines on the map for the most part.
Right.
So they really don't have much utility for us in terms of implementing the growth management goals and our own city goals and whatever new form of our comp plan is going to be, and especially kind of, I always kind of really come back to that efficient provision of services. Um, and, you know, the, the reason why you might want to divide, uh, the city into sections or, or neighborhoods or whatever in some fashion is so that you can tailor your policies and strategies to, for that area. Um, and especially if the, especially if you're trying to achieve something in a particular sub-area, whatever that is. So, you know, when we, when we, I'm kind of waving my hands around this little, the colorful neighborhood map, uh, right now, but if, but if this needs to change a lot or, or even a little in order to get there, I think that's, that, I think that's part of the conversation is that, you know, to, to really kind of bring it all together, make it comprehensive, we got to make sure that, um, those, those sections, um, reflect what we're really trying to achieve and have their tailored strategies.
And I, I completely agree with you, because I think it also feeds back, we go back to the 15 growth management goals, walkable community, uh, you know, provision of services, uh, all those kinds of things, reducing typical miles of travel, all those kinds of things sort of point in the direction of we got to focus our attention in a smaller and smaller fraction, you know, so we have some way of achieving those things rather than just put it on a broad way. So yes, definitely. Now, our neighborhood, um, appendix, which is a, a part of the land use element, but it was, in fact, we pulled it out of the, the element itself at the last update, just to reduce the bulk of the element, because the neighborhood element is a, right, 200 plus pages, uh, but it has lots of important information, not only about what's there, what we consider capping going forward, but also provides some policy direction about development within those areas, which we have used because the comprehensive plan is something we can use as part of development review to say, this is what the city wants. Um, and we have done that for projects. So there is a, there is an important connection that we want to make sure we do there. We want to make it a little clearer, maybe shorten it up a little bit, you know, but as much as possible preserve that. So other parts of the land use element, I just want to call your attention to, uh, there are a number of appendices, the neighborhoods we talked a little bit about. Uh, we also in there include the countywide planning policy, sustainable Thurston goals and actions, the entire section. Uh, there was a land use and housing survey that was done, uh, as part of the previous update that's included in there. Uh, we included lists of all the plans and documents that support it. There is a glossary, I've included the glossary in your packet because I think, I always like to make sure we all understand what terms we're using and we're using the same meaning for those terms, um, as well as the adoptive ordinance, the last time we did this adoption. And for some reason, we have a sales report in there. No, I don't know why, and yes, I'm the one who put it in there. I don't know why. It was there, it looked good, I put it in. It'll probably be a part of the next one, who knows? Okay, you think that sounds like a decent idea?
We'll see.
We'll see. Perfectly appropriate. Uh, land use maps, again, this is, we talked a little bit about the citywide map, the land, the neighborhood maps basically take the citywide map and make it a lot easier to read, uh, for all of those particular things. Um, the sub-area plans are also part of the land use element, our brewery district plan, the Capitol Boulevard corridor, the Little Rock sub-area plan are all part of the land use element. Basically, they're the neighborhood plans for those three areas, except Capitol Boulevard sort of overlaps, anyway. So you can find on our website now, this is where the, all the documents for the current land use element are, plus all the other current, uh, comprehensive plan documents. We are in the process of updating and working on the, uh, 2025 comprehensive plan update webpage. Uh, we're meeting with our communications folks this week, we've got, I think, some of the basic language down. Uh, it will be easier use, it'll be modeled similar to what the, the Tom Water Tree City website looks like, um, that's sort of a one-stop shop for all the background and everything else. Um, I'm still struggling with how best to put a lot of this guidance material on there for you so you don't have to, number one, you could hold on to the packets, I'd recommend you do that, but there is a lot of things I think you would want to look at that we don't necessarily want to give you in paper, except Terry, of course. But by the way, Terry, I think the guidance material is now over a thousand pages. I just got another 350 on missing middle, uh, this past week.
You don't appreciate the volume of it until you see the paper.
Yeah. So, anyway, uh, land use element, uh, the comp plan amendment update stuff is coming. Want to touch on three, uh, of the main commerce land use guidance material things that I think are the most important things to be looking at when we're working through this. The very first thing is the, uh, urban growth area guidebook. This is published in 2016. You'll notice that out of all the things we talked about, land use is the least updated one since the last update. So the guidance they actually published in 2016 is still very relevant. Uh, it talks about, and it's sort of misleading because you think urban growth area, that's outside the city, that's where we're going to annex it, no. That's everything within the urban area, that includes the city. Uh, and what's important is it talks about the process for, um, allocating the population, um, allocating the land uses, all of those kinds of things are discussed in detail in, in that guidebook. So if you want more information about processes, about how we're going to do this or how they have been done in the past, that, that is definitely the thing to look at. The periodic update checklist, uh, is sort of our list of things that we're supposed to update and address as part of this current update. Uh, Commerce last published this in March of this year. It does not include any of the new, um, state laws. So what we're working on right now is a gap analysis that includes, first of all, the periodic update checklist, plus the ecology, uh, critical area checklist, plus all the new state laws, plus the list of things we thought we want to update as part of this process in one gigantic document, and we're going to identify what needs to be updated and where in that particular document. I'm looking forward to seeing what it's going to look like, uh, because Erica's going to be tasked with doing the entire thing, she doesn't know this yet, don't tell her. I've started it, I'm panicking, uh, I'm hoping to have something by the end of September, how's that, uh, for the, what it's going to look? It, I think, Terry, if you looked at the packet, uh, there's, it, the checklist itself is only 40 pages, uh, as it is now, uh, and we're just adding to it. Okay.
Well, you, you say that, you know, this doesn't include the new state laws, it also doesn't include the WACs because they haven't even been written yet.
That is correct.
Over the course of the next 12 months, you, you're going to have several hundred people, uh, sitting in their little cubicles writing WACs, uh, that are going to be coming up, uh, after you've actually done most of your work.
Just how, just imagine how it feels to be in like federal way or Everett, and they're required to be done at the end of next year, and they're a year ahead of us in this process, meaning they're in the process, if they're, you know, on schedule, they've already written a good portion of it and they're just fighting about the details. So yeah, I'm, I'm really curious on how many people are going to make the deadline, because there's just a lot of things you have to address. Um, but we're, we're focused on trying to get that done. And I threw in there also, there, as a new state law, surprise, surprise, this past year about how to address, uh, urban growth area, and this is that urban growth area swaps. Now, the idea, and this is the only reason I'm going to bring it up, is we have areas in the city now that are dedicated in perpetuity to conservation of, uh, gophers, for the federally protected gopher species. That land cannot be used for anything else, period. Conservation conservation law, meaning that we can't, for our land use purposes, it can't be considered urban land. There's nothing we can put on it that could be urbanated. So that, what that means is we are looking at potentially swapping out areas of either our urban growth area or the city, or areas in the county that are outside the urban growth area. Now, this law allows for those kinds of swaps to take place. Now, the requirements, however, are really peculiar in the sense of it simplifies the process for making changes to your urban growth boundary. That's number one, and that's a really good thing, because sometimes you need to do that, and you can do it without causing more harm to the rural area than otherwise, you know, one-to-one. The, the issue is any swap has to be essentially 100 acres for 100 acres. So if I've got 100 acres in the city, I got to find something exactly 100 acres in the county, or a little bit less.
When is our next 10-year update of the UGA? It seems, seems like that that also.
Yeah, that's something the county is currently folded into their update process. So I'm curious to, because I haven't talked to the county staff about how they're dealing with this one.
Generally follow a couple of years after the decennial census, so right about now?
No.
Or when we did it last, when we do it last, that I could add 10 years to it.
We didn't, we haven't.
Remember it, but I don't.
We haven't really, well, here's, here's the issue, we didn't, the, the first time we did it was probably the only time we've done it, which is when they originally adopted the comp plans in the mid 90s. When they did that, the county had drawn an urban growth area boundary that was a bit bigger than they could justify, and they lost a few cases at the growth management hearings board and had to reduce it over time, which means people are not excited about repeating that process. So we haven't done it, I think. However, I think we've reached the point where we're going to have to consider doing some of that for a variety of reasons. For us, it's a matter of we've got conservation land that is, you know, useless as urban land. Uh, in other jurisdictions, they're dealing with other special districts like a school district that may have land that they purchased for developing a school that just happens to be outside of the urban growth area, which means they can't get water or sewer service to, and to, to develop. I don't know if this is the case still, but I do know that in early 2000s, that was definitely the case with North Hurston School District. They had a, from their perspective, a great piece of property just on the outside of the Lacey urban growth area that they couldn't do anything with because legally, we, the city could not extend water or sewer to the site. So I think there are some instances like that where we should, you know, we could reopen it and look at it. I'm just throwing that out there as this might be something else we deal.
Okay.
Quick question on that, actually, is Black Hills High School in the city limits or is it in the urban growth? Okay.
It is both, actually.
Oh, it is?
It's the urban growth boundary, uh, area is basically the city.
Yeah.
And the area in the county that is designated for urban level growth, but it's in the city.
Okay, so that wouldn't affect Black Hills?
No, it wouldn't affect, and I'm not aware of any, uh, Tom Water School District property that's in that kind of situation. There, like East Olympia is out in the county and, uh, Little Rock is out in the county, there, there, they have two sites that I know that are outside of the county, but I don't think they have any, in an immediate area of the city that's in that kind of situation.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Could we trade with the county, uh, the, uh, land in the southwest corner that's underwater?
We could, and that's what they did actually in about, about 10, a little more than 10 years ago. The land, a good portion of the lands that were taken out of the urban growth area for the city were those flooded lands, everything on Little Rock.
Some of them.
It was pretty nice, actually, you just had to look at the aerials of the time saying, we'll take that out, because, yeah, it's all underwater. Uh, but yes, that, that would be a thought.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, maybe not that situation, but wouldn't conservation lands, uh, count toward, um, green space, open space?
Yeah.
That you would, uh, need to, um, have within the incorporated area?
It counts towards, then, then that's a good question. What I need to do is, is I need to understand a little bit more what the, the state means by green space. Does that mean green space that is set aside, look but don't touch? Does that mean it's something you may have a trail in but limited impact otherwise? Or is that like soccer fields? My guess, and within the urban area, we have a bit more of the active recreation and a lit, little less of, you know, the pristine.
Just leave it alone.
Leave it alone. I mean, we've got critical areas, we've got areas that are set aside for that, so I just...
So there would maybe not, in some cases, there might be a reason to not swap?
So, uh, just again, this is what the, uh, the cover of the urban growth area guidebook looks like, what it, what it covers, periodic checklist again, uh, and then the urban growth area swaps fact sheet. I will be sure to copy you on any other interesting things that we come across, and you'll see a lot of these kinds of things. Um, and I'll definitely try to put a lot of links into the website, also other places to look. Click update on where we are, uh, timeline in the process. Uh, we are working on the community outreach schedule right now. Uh, Erica had a good meeting with our communication staff today to sort of start identifying , uh, particular actions and timing for all those things, so we hope to have more information on that shortly. Uh, we talked a little bit about the, the gap analysis, uh, data collection is underway. Uh, we have our contract with the TRPC signed, uh, and they are now looking at, into the housing allocation issue. We're going to have five meetings over September and October to sort of, I think the process is called, we all, all the jurisdictions from the county get in the room and we fight about it and whoever comes out wins. That's essentially what the process is. Um, but.
Making by arm's.
It, it is, it is, yes, it is definitely that. Um, and then we're also working obviously on a sort of a general format for the updated plan, so you can see what it'll look like at the end. Um, talked a little bit of what the gap analysis will cover. All of those things are part of what we're using to guide it, the periodic checklist that we talked about, the critical areas checklist from ecology, excuse me, um, all those periodic update materials that I mentioned, uh, the state legislation, our plans adopted by the city, that's the housing action plan, the climate mitigation plan and so, and the urban forestry plan, and any specific plans from agencies outside the city, um, school district, port, those kinds of things. Uh, please. So our September meeting, uh, it's on the 12th, we'll focus on policies, goals and actions, and anything else that you have come up with, hey, I want to talk about as part of this process, or have questions about or want more information about, uh, we definitely could include. Um, talked a little bit, we'll get into phase two next year and phase three after we finish all that. Again, um, we have a periodic update webpage address now, it's just not up yet, so once I get that, I'll make sure you guys get copies of everything. Any, any questions or I'm, the, if you have any things that you would like to talk about further on the 12th, let me know. Um, if you could do... If you could do so before the last week of August, I'd appreciate it. I'm going to be out at a conference first week of September, so my working on the packet for that next meeting will probably be the last week of September.
Great, yeah, that was a lot. Does anybody else have anything on, anything more to add right now? Thanks, Brad. All right, our next meeting is the 22nd, and Brad mentioned that we'll be going over the housing element, but that one is not.
Yep. We'll be doing a deep dive into the housing element and all the requirements that are now part of that. The staff work will be a little bit more detailed than what we have here for the land use element. And there will be some very interesting guidance materials. To be honest, I'm not being facetious when I say that, because these are truly, I think, interesting. They're new. They're new, they're going to deal with the housing capacity side, and they're going to deal with the diversity side of things, and how we outreach to disadvantaged communities and communities that haven't been involved in the process before, and how we document that. And all of that will be part of that discussion.
Anything else you want to add?
A quick update on the city's diversity, the Equity Toolbox Project. I do need to reach out to Kelly and the others on the committee about where we're at. We have finished the interviews with the city management team. We've talked, had a good discussion with Lisa, our new city administrator, about her concerns and how she wants to deal with them as part of this process. We're not seeing any dramatic changes from what we just started with. We're going to do what we said we're going to do. We're now in the process of identifying and reviewing some other, what other jurisdictions have done in developing particular toolboxes. We're looking specifically at what Auburn has done, Kirkland has done, and we've asked DeMarsh to come up with some examples of jurisdictions similar to our size. Both of those cities are about three times our size. And we're having, we're going to have another presentation with the management team as well, probably later this month, early September. So, I need to send out an update to the team to let everybody know.
Okay. We just have a few minutes left, but any other points that anybody wants to raise? Or should we call it a night? All right.
By as I motion to adjourn?
Great, thank you. I'll second. That's Commissioner Von Holz seconding. Good discussion tonight. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.